First bullet that's under, the information item should move up to Roman number one. First item is the approval of the minutes from the meeting we last had on June 22nd.
Let me make that motion, sir.
And I will second.
Are there any changes? Are there any comments? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Hold on one second. Do we want to go into presentation first as to what the materials are?
Yes.
Right. So, Jan?
Okay. We just wanted to kind of summarize some of the portfolio changes that we've made thus far as a preface to the presentation today. So, as a means of doing that, if you could turn to page four. This page shows that the target asset allocations that were approved in the investment policy that was approved in December, so the target allocations are in the middle. And as you know, it has three main components, an equity component which is for capital appreciation and includes the regional mandates of U.S. equity, the non-U.S. equity in emerging markets, and a diversifying assets component to diversify the portfolio and to hedge against inflation, which includes the hedge funds, the non-marketable investments, and the real assets. And then the fixed income component to reduce the volatility of the portfolio and to hedge against periods of prolonged economic declines. So, the board approved the targets in December of '08, and we began the implementation in the beginning of '09. And as you know, that was a pretty challenging time, so we decided to move in phases and based upon valuations. And we also made a conscious decision to not, or rather to defer the investments in alternatives to a later date from the December date. So, turning to the next page, you'll see the changes that actually have taken place over time, beginning in 2009. So, if you look at the second column, September 30, '08, you'll see the old asset allocation, which is essentially a 60-40, very traditional, mostly domestic asset allocation. And then, beginning in early 2009, we started to diversify the portfolio, first by restructuring the domestic and the international equity portfolio to a core satellite approach where we initially got the core diversification through a passive approach, which was very low cost. And the idea was to add the quote-unquote "satellite managers" to add value. We've added one satellite manager, Walter Scott, and there's some additional work that we want to do there. At the same time that we have discussed the core satellite, it was also decided that we would augment the regional mandate that we have with a global mandate. And so, that's one of the things that we'll address today, is a global equity manager mandate. And with these changes, you know, our returns have improved by the end of 2009. It was a good year. We were up 24 percent. We were in the top 25th percentile in terms of returns. And if you turn to page eight, just looking at the more recent numbers, you'll see that even in the challenging environment of so far 2010, we've been able to generate positive returns. So, in September, for the month of September, the portfolio was up 6.2 percent. For the third quarter, 10.1 percent. Calendar year-to-date, up 5.6 percent. And for the trailing 12 months, it's 13.5. That's an estimate. And that would put us in above median, based upon preliminary numbers of the medians. So, we still have some work to do, and what Cambridge is here to present today is the work that we've done on the global equity mandate and to make a recommendation there, as well as to address the non-marketable allocation of 5 percent, which remains unfilled. So, with that, Mark Fowler and Thomas Schmidt-Jefferson will address those areas.
Sure.
Paul?
So, if you turn to page 12 in your materials, that is the global equity manager search. And so, what we did here was we set out, as we've done in previous manager searches, with a long list of managers that we thought could be appropriate. We communicated them to CUNY staff. They, together with us, chose a shorter list that we then interviewed. So, we interviewed four managers in early October and decided which one we ended up recommending jointly with the staff. And so, the managers we looked at were, as you can see on the bottom, a UK manager, Sanderson, deep value, very, very good manager, longer track record, even though the firm is not that old, it still had a good, strong track record. Artisan is a more broad firm, has lots of different products within the equity universe, and also a very good manager. And Tweedy Brown, which is a New York-based manager with an exceptionally long track record, going back to the days of Benjamin Graham, actually, and which they pointed out during the interview as well. But the one that impressed us the most was a firm called International Value Advisors. And that manager is a little bit special for a couple of reasons. It's a recent firm, which obviously always raises a little bit of eyebrows, but a recent firm with a long history, if you will, in that the team that comes in this firm basically comes out of a very well-respected manager called Arnold Bleischroerda, that is well-known in the investment world. And they, this team basically lifted, those two of the portfolio managers lifted all the analysts that they wanted out of Bleischroerda, with the exception of one portfolio manager, Jean-Pierre Eubert Yard, who was very well-respected and well-known. He stayed with Bleischroerda. But the others, especially the two portfolio managers called Charles De Beau and Charles de Lardemel, those two took their team out and started IVA. So, they were a known quantity when they went out, and for that reason, they have been able to very quickly attract a substantial amount of assets, which make the firm viable, and not only so, but also profitable at this point. So, they have, at this point, about $10 billion under management, which is pretty exceptional for a firm that started in 2007. What's also, apart from the strong team and the fact that these guys have been working together for a number of years, even if the firm is newer, they still work together in the previous regime, is also that they have chosen to start, and they could be, given that they were sort of writing the rules as they started the new firm, they have chosen to start with a little bit of wider mandate than most equity managers. Not only have they chosen to lead with a global equity product, which many, for many, that's been sort of an add-on, they've had their regional mandates and maybe their U.S. mandates, and then because demand has started for these broader mandates, they have created a global product. For IVA, they could basically start with a global mandate as their flagship product, and they have gathered the most assets in that particular mandate. But they also chose to go a little bit beyond just equities. They have broadened their scope to also include things like high-yield bonds. They hold, at this point, a little bit of gold and other things. And the reason they say, is that they say, "Well, we think ourselves mainly as, you know, more absolute return-oriented." That's not hedge funds, like they don't short, they don't do those kind of things, but they will invest in things that they think can protect value in a down market. And so, then they will admit this very readily, that they typically will not, you know, keep up with the markets in a strong bull market, but they will protect in a down market. That was their stated goal when they set out, and the performance track record so far proves that in abundance in 2008, if you turn to page 15, in 2008, when managers were down, you know, in the, not just in the double digits, but in the 30s and 40s, they were down 11.9 percent. That's inevitable, given that they have an equity focus, but it's probably one of the best equity years among any of our managers, with very few exceptions. But then, obviously, the 2009 proves the other end of the story, in a strong roaring bull market of 2009, they then lack their peers. So, what you're getting, if you are getting IVAs, you're getting, we think, strong returns over a multi-year period, you're getting very good downside protection, you're giving a little bit up on the upside, but we think especially in an uncertain environment like today, that's worth it. And again, it's a broader mandate than what you have most. We had a call, no, we had a meeting with Charles de Lardemel, one of the portfolio managers, and he showed not just astute knowledge of the stocks he has in his portfolio, but he also had a good view of the sort of macro environment, which is necessary if you want to go beyond just the equity scope. You need to know when to make those sort of off-benchmark bets that you're making, and he did have that knowledge, and so does the whole team. So, one thing that, if you want to hire this manager, which we think you should, you should be aware that this is not a benchmark-oriented product. I mean, they will, at some points, lack the benchmark quite substantially by, could be up to double digits in a given year when markets are up a lot, but they will then hopefully also protect on the downside, and they should protect on the downside. And again, they've proven that they can. 2010 is another good example of that. They are up about 10 percent. The markets are up 4 percent, but they were actually up much more than that. If you look at the six-month period here, you can see that they were at 0.8 percent at the end of June, where the markets, their benchmark was down 9.1. So, at that point, they were up 10 percent over the market just in a half a year. So, it demands some stomach to be able to live through these, you know, periods of under outperformance. But again, we think the underperformance comes at the right time, exactly when the markets are roaring, and the outperformance is coming exactly when you need it, when the markets are down.
For the members of the committee, any questions?
I just have one question. I was just looking at IVA's country allocations and saw that 16.3 percent are in Japan. And just, I think that Japan is, they're going to go into a point of deflation, you know, is what a lot of people are saying. I mean, how does this, how would this impact the movement to that IVA estimation?
Well, we actually, they talked about that at the meeting. They like Japan, like some managers, especially deep-value managers. Actually, you have one of them already in your portfolio, Walter Scott likes Japan as well, because they are unprecedented cheap. If you look at historical basis and even relative basis, they're trading at very, very cheap multiples. And so, the companies are very good value. The problem, as you say, there are some demographic problems, and there are some economic problems that they are facing, but right now, the growth projection for Japan is actually more than, say, Europe and some of the other internationals. So, they find good value. They do recognize that the issues, and they could have theoretically more, but they've chosen to have that in their portfolio.
Any questions?
I'll move that we, resolution to select international value advisors. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, onto the business. Private equity.
Yes.
Private equity, okay. So, Janet mentioned-
You ready? Yeah, I figured.
As Janet mentioned, there's currently a 5 percent policy target to private equity investments. It's not something that we've implemented due to other priorities in the portfolio. This is your Eyes Wide Open meeting, similar to the hedge fund meeting. This is something that, once you invest, it's going to be in the portfolio for 10 to 15 years. So, it's not something that it's easy to unwind, and if you do try and unwind it, it's going to cost you quite a bit.
It'll be gone. Yeah, but that's a great investment, because all of us will knock it here and-
Be gone.
To pay the price.
So, we want to make sure everybody understands what you're signing up for, and if it's
something that you feel that's not appropriate, we've also can talk a little bit about what other alternatives are out there. Certainly, there's been a lot written about private equity, particularly during the currency crisis. We actually thought about starting off this presentation with the Mark Twain quote, that the reports of his death were greatly exaggerated. I think that probably applies to the private equity venture capital realm of things. You know, the good managers, this has always been a story about accessing good managers, and to the extent that you feel like you can access good managers, for you, it'd be through a fund-to-fund, given your investment size, we still think it makes sense from a return-oriented perspective. Private equity venture capital should outperform developed markets if you can access good managers in search of alpha. These private investments are less efficient, and talented managers should be able to generate better-than-market returns. In practice, that doesn't always occur, and even some of the best managers do have bad vintage years. So, it's something where you need to have vintage year diversification, manager diversification. And it's really almost a leap of faith in some respects, because for the first five to seven years, this is going to detract from your performance with the J curve, so your paying fees, they're not marking up anything in the portfolio. And so, you know, as we look at your performance report, if you do implement a private equity investment, you know, for the next few years, we expect that to be a detractor. Hopefully, you know, those managers start to realize some good investments, and it starts to enhance returns. It's something to be aware of. And then, there's the complication factor. So, the reasons you do it, one, return orientation, two, is diversification. We do think it provides diversification, although one could argue that some of that diversification is overstated, given that these things aren't mark-to-market and the performance lags a quarter. So, when you throw that into a correlation mix, it suggests better diversification properties than if these things are getting daily marks. Reasons you don't do it is, one, you don't have to. We think you can meet your return objectives without venturing into private equity venture capital. Two, there's a headache factor, so it's a lot more work involved in building up a private equity venture capital program. You know, these managers come to market with a very, sometimes, short window. It's been a little bit longer, is a bit harder to raise capital these days, but it means that the staff, the committee, will have to keep an eye on what's coming out in the market. There might be two or three managers that you think are attractive, and they may not be coming out of the market at the same time. And so, making those comparisons and making those decisions gets a little bit more complicated. There are administrative burdens that Janet would face in terms of more accounting issues that pop up, you know, auditor, all these requirements are getting more and more each day, and certainly in the private equity thing, where things aren't mark-to-market, there'll be more questions for her to have to answer. Capital calls, as these programs start to develop, these managers call capital over time, so it's not like you write a check right away and that money gets invested. These managers will seek out investment opportunities. When they find those opportunities, they'll raise capital from those clients, and, you know, if you have four or five managers in the program, you might be getting, like, weekly calls. And, you know, some of your managers have daily liquidity, some are monthly, some are quarterly, and then trying to manage all that and kind of build up your portfolio just takes more effort. Our advice here is that, if you're going to do it, we think you want to do it in a manner that's going to make a difference. And so, the target allocation's 5 percent. Our suggestion is, if you're going to do it, you should be willing to increase that to 10 percent. Hours is going to take five to 10 years to get to that 10 percent, so let's, the thought is just recognize that it's going to be a while before we get to 5 percent. So, that'll be an intermediate, or interim target, longer-term target. Our goal would still to try and get to 10 percent. If you're not willing to go to 10 percent for all these headache factors, then we think it's probably not worth it, and we would reallocate the capital. And the couple options you have really depend on what your goals are. So, if it's growth-oriented, you could put it into developed, long-only equities. You could also look at, if you're more diversification-oriented, look at things like real assets, either public or private, or things like hedge funds. So, you know, that's kind of a high-level picture. We're willing to drill down in terms of all these different strategies, as much as you want. We can pause for questions at this point to see if there are any particular direction or questions or concerns that you might have.
What do you think the future of the tax consequences of carried interest is going to be? Do you have any opinion on that at all?
I think it's safe to assume that the price, the taxes are going up. Whether that has an impact on the industry as a whole, I'm not sure. Still, they're going to be very, I mean, they're well-compensated individuals. I don't know that they're going to try and make up for it by charging higher fees. I mean, it's something to watch. They might try and raise bigger funds in order to offset some of those tax increases. So, it's part of the due diligence process to see whether or not this is impacting any individual manager. But you make a good point about regulatory risk, and that's another risk with these things. I don't think anybody has a clear crystal ball in terms of what regulations might impact these industries, you know, in a positive manner or in a negative manner. And you could be five years into this, and all of a sudden, something comes out that could be a negative factor that might have an impact on returns.
But two things, you know, this increase or change in the tax law is obviously something that's been talked about for several years now. It hasn't come to fruition yet, and certainly, there are substantial means going into fighting that, if you will. And, you know, who knows that there's elections coming and what have you, so maybe there is an appetite to do it in the next. So, timing of when that will come is very uncertain. And two, obviously, the funds that, if you go into it, the funds that you commit to cannot change. I mean, once you go into it, they cannot change their fee structure, so at least the re-upping might be an issue, but once you're in, they shouldn't be able to change their fees.
Would we be able to play the game under $5 million? None of these shops are going to take you for much less than that, I would imagine.
You're not going to be able to get into a direct program?
Yeah. There will be a fund of funds.
Fund of funds.
And if we're in a fund of funds, it's really hands-off.
You're outsourcing a lot of the due diligence on the individual managers to the fund of funds?
I know, I mean, and it's going to be costly.
I mean, that's certainly, that's certainly an aspect. Fund of funds are, as we had the discussion when we hired hedge funds, I mean, if you can do it without fund of funds, you would do it without fund of funds, because fund of funds just adds an extra layer of fees onto it.
But we're just too small. I don't know how you do this. By avoiding a fund, we could-
Well, that's right. And it's, the overall amount of funds is too small. Hopefully, over time, it grows. And I do think, as it grows, then we seriously consider doing it.
Then consider it.
Right. We can do it with-
To dip a toe in now, it's just kind of crazy.
You would have to grow a lot to do direct, to be honest. You know, if you think about the number of managers you want in the portfolio to provide manager diversification, vintage year diversification, you'd probably have to commit 100 to 150 million to be able to do that.
Yeah.
But obviously, not in a given year, it'd be over time, but that still is obviously not attain at this point.
I mean, I think the size issue is the compelling issue.
The size combined with the complexity.
Yeah, I would recommend reallocating. Realocating among the-
Oh, yeah, sure. I don't see how you could do it any other way.
You know I'm the conservative one, and I say no. And I suppose it-
Well, the good news, Janet, is that you beat the University of Chicago last year. So, that's the good news. So, whatever you're doing, you're doing something well.
You also beat Yale.
And you beat well-quit-
Ann Arbor.
And look at the size of their portfolios.
Yeah, they lost more than, never mind.
You know, I was having a conversation with Barry this morning, and we were talking about the challenging environment that we're in, and that we might have our participants drawing more from the fund than we normally do in spending. I mean, we have a 5 percent spending rate. The average spending now is about 4 percent, but I could see where it's going to go up and then OMPA.
This is a very important point. You know, there's virtually no liquidity once you get into a private equity investment.
You're locked in.
And with the state really facing very, very severe stress, there's going to be more and more propensity for our campuses to rely on monies that are invested through their foundations or the monies that they pull out of the investment pool. So, you're restricting the amount of money that can throw off, you know, you're restricting the amount of liquidity that you have to use for operations, but I imagine, you know, if you work towards a goal of about $10 million, that's not going to be appreciable.
I think you're right. You're absolutely right, and that's the conversation we were having this morning. And I guess the other question that we had is whether this is the time to move into illiquid investments, you know, for us at this time. And I just-
I don't think it is.
So, let's go down on what our alternatives are. I think as you laid out, we could put it in the equity market, we could put it into natural resources, we could put it into some, I guess, was it, real estate? Direct real estate.
Yeah, direct.
And on the, you know, for the real estate or natural resources, you can do a public or private. Private has some of the same headache factors and lockups that you would have with private equity venture capital. You can do it the public way as well. I mean, you currently have one public diversified manager, so it's really depends on what your goals are. If it's return-oriented, I think it's, we're talking reallocate among the global equity pool, and it could include things like emerging markets. If it's diversify the pool more, we could look at things like increasing the real assets or increasing the hedge fund exposure. And I think for hedge funds, we're still in a wait-and-see to see whether or not, you know, this group is comfortable with the hedge fund managers that we currently have and how that performance develops. So, I think global equity is probably something we consider, but, you know, it really depends on what your goals and preferences are. And once we get that feedback, Janet and Thomas and I will-
Just for the chancellery, how important is, anyone in the chancellery, liquidity, the ability to go in and liquefy because we need to operate?
I think it's going to be more and more compelling.
And that's a major-
And that's always a concern that we've had, to get access to the dollars to fill gaps that are created.
And I don't think it's going to be short-term. Probably the minimum would be 36 months. Going in.
Keep coming, please. Remember also that we're investing non-endowment funds, and that's where liquidity is going to come in for selling the campuses as well, so I think it is a concern.
Definitely. Doesn't that lead us, then, towards the equity market, the most liquid of all markets? I mean, we might have to liquid-
Or fix income.
... provide at a point in time when the market is down, but nonetheless, we can get cash.
But if you look at our allocations, we're actually, you know, we were over our target in U.S. equities, we're over our target in non-U.S. equities, we're over our target in emerging markets. I mean, it's like, we've already done it.
Do we have automatically balanced? If you look at us versus an average endowment, where is that page? You'll see that where we're under-allocated is in the alternative space.
Page 27.
No, that's where California.
Yeah, but we're, you know-
Let's conclude. We're not investing.
Look at page 27.
27. What we've allocated, in comparison to college and university.
So, to the extent that the peer information is important to you, and with different groups, it has more or less importance, as Janet mentioned, you're underweight in the hedge funds, and, you know, roughly 80 percent of the colleges, universities in your peer size have exposure to private equity venture capital. And it certainly needs are important, so we're not suggesting do it just because others are doing it.
Are these individual accounts, or are these co-mingled and then broken out by account? In other words, when I'm looking at this, for example, colleges, 75 to 200 million, and I see a certain percentage of non-marketable.
What page are you on?
We're on 27.
Free call chart.
Are we, am I looking at individual portfolios, or am I looking at a overall manager that has a certain percentage, so that they're getting the diversification?
Within-
This represents 38 colleges, universities, and the average is what the top line. The number that actually have exposure to, say, U.S. equity is the next row, so 38 managers out of 38 had U.S. stocks. And then, the average allocation for those that have exposure to that asset class is provided on the third row.
Yeah, you have to be careful also when you mix in 38 colleges or universities. You know, the publics and the privates are very, very different worlds in the way in which they depend on their investment portfolios. A place like Princeton, I'm sure, probably relies at least on, you know, 40 percent of their operation on their investment portfolio. So, there's- So they're going to play a game very, very different than a big state university where their, their revenue sources are so different.
Very much so.
So mixing them really presents a very opaque picture as you try to compare it to CUNY.
On, on our asset allocation, and I notice we're, we're above target in many areas here, are we on automatic rebalancing?
But remember, we're, we're rebound, we're looking at rebalancing every time there's, there's moves in the portfolio, we make sure, we make sure that we take assets that are spending occurring, we take it from, from the, the things that are over, over target. But remember that the reason why we're above in the various equity portions is because we're distributing those 5% that we are not using in non-markete.
You know, because it's, it's early on in the position, but it jumps out as to where we are, at the top of page four, where clearly we're, you know, we're above in X, in the U.S. and non-U.S. equity.
Yep.
Two to three, four percent above.
Four percent.
In one, emerging markets, we're up a 1%. Hedge funds, we're not there.
Three tenths.
Three tenths of a percent. The private equity and non-marketable, that's the issue.
Yep.
At hand. We're up point two in real, and down on fixed income, which is probably the right thing.
We did do a little rebalancing to fixed income recently.
I don't know. But nonetheless, we're within the allocation ranges. So that's, I mean, the triggering of a rebalancing is not, it's still within the ranges, so that we, you know, we're not going to incur the cost of going through the, through that. But this is, you know, where, where do, you know, the reallocation and actually looking at the target allocations and saying, going half a point here or down a half, that's what we need to go.
Yeah, I think, you know, that there are so many issues that come into play, but I think that our, our key objective overall is, is enhanced return and diversification at the same time. I think that, you know, we all agree that getting into the non-marketable area now is probably not the wisest thing. And realistically, we can always make that decision at a later date. And probably when we are of a bigger size, it would be a better time to do that. Then you look at the other classes of, of assets that we could, you know, the options. And I say to myself, you know, okay, where, let's say, if, when private equity was, was really big and if you could have gotten into it in, in the early 90s, like a lot of the, and even before the Ivy Leagues, where they have really done well despite what happened in 2008, you know, what asset class has that kind of potential, even though we're not talking about a huge sum of money, but that also helps in terms of the diversification. On top of that, I say to myself, this is one of the most uncertain environments for investing that I've ever experienced. And one idea that, that we, we discussed was to maybe put it, to have as much flexibility as we can get. And to do that, the one way would be to add to the, the core satellite and think of that more, you know, in terms of opportunistic as well, so that we are going out there, looking at some additional managers in a very focused way that like the International Value Advisors, where they're clearly different, they're clearly top, you know, just incredibly impressive investors. And they have the ability to, or at least their approach is to be unconstrained. They can go into fixed income, they can be in equity, they can be in gold, and they have the ability to make those macro bets and, and they've done well. I just think flexibility is important now. I don't want to necessarily lock.
Flexibility and liquidity, I think are the two operative principles at this point. Because we're in such an uncertain time.
Oh, it's.
How much range does the global equity manager have for changing their asset exposure?
That's, um.
Because, you know, it does, it does filter back into, you know, if we think we're in equities and we're really in debt, we ought to know that.
No, they will, they, I mean, they are, they are an equity manager. I mean, they have, they have, they have certain limits of how much they can go up, so they, I mean, they wouldn't go more than, than, you know, the 6%. They might go up to 10% in, in, in other things. Now, they do consider as part of the equity mandate, they could go into preferreds and some of those things that are more equity-like and those they, they're not, I mean, they would consider them equity substitutes. So they, they do have some ranges. They're not, you're not going to see them being 100% in, in fixed income, for instance, at any given point.
Thank you.
And their prospectuses, Terrence, they, they have to be very careful in terms of leaving their, their stated goals in the prospectus, so.
Staldrift. They can't, they'll be careful.
And I imagine the SEC is, is very attentive to that.
Yeah, I think we have to do what's right for us and not necessarily what is right for Harvard and Yale and some of the other Ivy League. So.
Are we going to decide, are we, are you going to come back to with the preference?
We're looking to the committee for a decision where that money should go. And then we, we can come back to you with a recommendation in that, in that area.
I think we're more looking at it, at an indication where, where you want, when, what.
Professor Martel.
Given, given that we were talking about non-marketable alternatives and we're thinking about time horizons that will happen in, you know, potentially decades, perhaps the way to reallocate would be to the emerging market sector, which would strike me as, as opportunity, the area that would present potentially the longest, highest possibility for, for growth over a prolonged period. That would be, that would be the most consistent, in my view, equity investment, given the discussion regarding non-marketable alternatives.
Would you put all 5% into emerging markets and make their target 10?
I don't, I, that's certainly possible. I mean, that would certainly be a, something I'd be comfortable with, given, given that we're prepared to talk about 5% non-marketable. The equitable, the emerging market portfolio would have more liquidity than obviously the non-marketable alternative and exposure to potentially some significant growth. I mean, you could allocate it also a little more to hedge funds. I mean, again, you're looking, you're looking for capturing some alpha here. I, that would be my, my thought.
I think that, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But there, there really is no, you know, when you look at the various options and you say, is this where we should go or is this, there's really, no one can say what's the right area. With hedge funds, we're in a fund of funds, the returns that we're getting are a bit muted because of that. In the emerging markets, and I think we all, you know, like emerging markets, it is a higher risk there. When the markets were down, they were really down. And you've got all of these issues with the currency wars that are, it, there is so much uncertainty that could impact. And I'm not saying it's a great deal of money, but that's, you know, I guess why, as I said, return and diversification and, and flexibility, it's, it's, there's really no right answer, unfortunately.
Well, you're going to come in with some fund of funds that we would make some determination from. I mean, that's where you're going to start with.
Or managers.
Well, I mean, managers of, of, that space is what I'm saying.
Yes, but yeah, exactly. We try to, try to fill in an allocation. That's, that's the point.
So something with an emerging markets, maybe dial that up and look at some global equity managers. What about the hedge fund idea? I mean, you could split the five equally. Again, hedge funds are kind of new. So we want to hear what you have to say about that.
Hedge funds are not an asset class. There are, you know, each strategy is different, so, you know, that's, that's a manager pick. I don't know. Anyone here think the dollar's going to strengthen over the next 10 years?
No.
I don't.
Question about Japan, I heard. Who, where do, where does, I'm serious, precious metals, gold, where does that fall?
It would fall in real assets. It would fall in real assets. And your, your managers are already, your managers are already doing some of that. I mean, Wellington, Wellington has commodity exposure, including gold exposure. You just heard the IBA will, will, will have that too when, when you hire them. So, so you do have some exposure already to, to, and will get more to, to precious metals specifically. But again, that's a call that, that, you know, it's not a perpetual thing in your portfolio. It's something that the manager will have to assess how much and how little they, they want.
Can you get us some Chinese rare earth?
Yes. That would be, that would be good.
Precious metals has had quite a run.
Exactly.
Right.
And so you're, you're buying at a very high point, too.
In times of, in times of confusion, they've always run up.
But when they fall, they fall.
When they fall, they fall like a rock.
Remember, at low interest rates, the cost of holding gold is low, right? If you get 25 basis points for, you know, for T-bills, gold is not, it's about like it's 5%, you're losing each year, right?
Somebody wants to make the decision.
There's no doubt, you go back to page four, just remembering, markets that meet, we buy the fall within equities. We're up equities in both categories to combine. Question is, do we leave it there or do we allocate out of there into hedge, into emerging markets?
When's our next meeting?
It's already, it's already in that.
They already have it.
No, I know, you already have some in, but, but the question is, we have 5% to play with. Do we, do we allocate back from the equity area? If we're going to, if we're, if we were to, to, the way Professor Martel was saying, let's take it and put it in emerging markets, emerging markets would go from 5% to 10%, meaning we'd have to start drawing down equities. Or we could split the difference.
Two and a half and.
Two and a half.
Wouldn't you worry about the currency issues here with the emerging markets at this particular point? I mean, that, in an uncertain world we're in now, it's a little scary to me.
It's a clear issue. And, and, you know, you can find, but you can find emerging market funds that hedge their currency risk, but then you lose a little bit of the reasons for being in emerging markets.
Yeah, well, you know, then let's leave it where it is, with the full understanding we're within our range of equities and leave it there. And if the equity market runs up and its value goes above, we'll be back. We'll have another quarterly meeting. Just leave it at this. It's a good, because they hate to have them. It's a good, you know.
Because I don't think anything's going to happen until after.
It seems to me we're looking at a, at some kind of variant of, of option B.
Two weeks from now.
On page 25.
But it's not sustainable.
25. I mean, on page 25, Cambridge has presented the several options. And option B is the, we seem to be talking around that in terms of the, of the equity. And I guess the decision is whether we're going to move more into emerging market or, or take their suggestion of just put in five, five tenths of a percent and split the rest between global and U.S. equity or, but it's some variant of that. That's, that's what I think we're, we're talking about.
It's almost like the card percentages, the right percentages.
Right, that's right.
They're falling right in line.
Yeah, and we did run an option and with the 5% going to emerging and the numbers would be, for the real arithmetic return, it'd be 5.9, for the standard deviation, 11.3, for the real compound return, 5.3, and a 0.44 sharp ratio.
And it's very close to option B.
It's very close.
I wouldn't double that.
We'll meet again. It sounds like you have some consensus.
Take 150 million short oil unless you would have it.
I'm not, you know.
I think staying put.
Staying put is where we are, so there's no decision to be made.
That's a good, that's a good decision.
That's a good decision.
More specific recommendation in this direction?
Yeah, we didn't have to talk. I mean, would you like us to come with some manager ideas at the next meeting, possibly for the 5%?
Plus a more specific recommendation with the reallocation of the 5% within the equity portfolio.
Before we adjourn, before we talk about the other market out there, it's the bottom of the sixth and Yankees. There will be another day. We're going back to Texas.
The bats have come back.
Don't say that, please.
What's the topic?
You need your general counsel always to give you a reality.
Yeah, I'll tell you something.
Doesn't sound like a Yankee.
Are there any more topics or any more questions? Thank you for your turn.
Thank you.
You're welcome. How are you guys on palladium? How are you folks, are you keen on palladium?
On what?
Palladium.
Palladium? We, we, we don't cut our, cut, cut the commodity exposure, that's fine. We, we have managers, we hire managers to do that.
Palladium is.
You didn't want, I didn't want to say that because I, no, 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 that's exactly, I don't know what to say that because.
You know, I, I don't.